Official clock says it's 5:30. And welcome to the May 8th meeting of the Manhattan City Commission. Would you please join me in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The, this is a work session. And our topic this evening is the Housing Market Analysis. And the subtext title is Housing Snapshot with Presentation of Key Housing Trends Along With Existing Conditions and Barriers. And so Chad Bungier is here to kick it off. So if you would take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Chad Bungier, Assistant Director with Community Development. We've been working on the Manhattan Housing Market Analysis since last fall. Our team, led by John Versu, who's our Housing Planner, among other great things he does for the department, has been leading this project. And we're about a third of the way through of it. And the first deliverable by our partners in development strategies. Development Strategy Crew's here tonight to deliver that or to discuss that. So I want to turn it on over to Andy Fister and him take it away from there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, good evening, Commissioners and Mayor. Thank you for this opportunity to discuss kind of our progress so far and where we're going with the Housing Market Analysis Initiative. There's a few things before we get into the presentation I'd like you all to keep in mind. This is a comprehensive study. So we're looking at housing needs across all affordability, income, and housing type spectrums. We know that we're building on community conversations that have some been taking place, we understand, for decades here. We want to build on those community conversations with really deep and accurate data analysis to get all of that information in one place. So that as we move forward in this next phase, we can help the city through working with the Steering Committee kind of focus on what comes next and how we address some of the challenges that we've identified so far through the process. We also want to acknowledge that, as you know, things are changing rapidly in our economy, in Manhattan, in Kansas, nationally and globally. We're trying to, you know, keep up to date on those as we work through the study. You know, some of the work we did initially in October, we've gotten new information and some things have changed. So you might see some revisions come through. Like until we're done in August or September, I couldn't think of August, we'll, we'll be updating and revising as we learn more. We're about to enter, you know, into the spring housing market. So some of the dynamics we saw the last six months could change. So we need to be open and ready to, you know, make adjustments as we learn and refine toward the strategies and actions that we'll be recommending in the future. And I want to also note that everything we're talking about today, we're not making recommendations yet. We had an excellent work session with the Steering Committee at 11 o'clock earlier today. We had great discussion around what the priorities should be and, and some of the tools that we might start to think about and research more that may work in Manhattan. But we're not recommending anything yet. We're getting the information out there about the needs, current needs and future needs, where we see demand going and some of the implications for future land use and what potential target markets might be in the future. And so we want to get at the priorities. We want to answer your questions. We are open and we ask to be challenged if there's things that we need to talk about. We want to have the discussion we need to have to get this right for the city so that you can move forward in a strategic way to start addressing some of these challenges the way that makes sense for Manhattan. And so one of the things about housing is that, you know, there's a lot of nuances. There's a lot of facets to delivering housing that meets all community needs. We know that, you know, private financing and investment is a huge component. We want to leverage and think about how existing tools, programs, and resources are being used and how they might be used better if that's the case in the future. But also think about, you know, the things the city controls, policy and zoning, tools and incentives, public investments such as the workforce housing funds that are going to come to the table soon. That is a component of all of this and meeting the housing needs and what partnerships and coordination we need among the community. It's really a holistic picture. There is no silver bullet or one program that will address the community's housing challenges. So we need to think about all those different facets, prioritize, and, and try to help you all move forward. And so I forgot to introduce my team at the beginning because I was kind of excited to get started. I'm Andy Fister. With me is Justin Carney, Miriam Keller, and Chantel Frye. And again, we're happy to be here. So I want to start with a few project updates, what we've done to date and what, where we're going. I want to touch on the definition of suitability, which is housing suitability, which has been an underlying term for, for this conversation in the community. We're going to talk through some of the key themes and findings. I want to illustrate what, where we are in terms of thinking about future housing demand as of today that we'll continue to refine for this next phase. And, and really kind of illustrate when we talk about a strategic approach, the next phase of this project, what we mean by that and where, and where we go from here. So a quick review of where we are. Chad, sir, we're about a third through the process. We spent the last few months collecting as much data as we can get our hands on. We've had a lot of community conversations to help, you know, fill the gaps where there's, there are certain things we can't get data about. So we want to understand the community from perspective of community members. We had a survey where we got pretty good responses and where we're, we're unpacking that information now. And in the next few weeks, we'll have an update about what we learned from the community survey. And, and then we're here today to kind of talk about these key findings, what the needs are. And so the next step is, okay, we understand the needs. We want to ask the question, so what do we do about them? And then after we think through what do we do about them, what have other communities done that has worked well? We want to ask, you know, what might work well in Manhattan? Given your unique economic, political, and market environment, there are some unique aspects to Manhattan's housing market that, you know, we haven't seen in a lot of places. And so we want to help, help address those in the next phases. You know, our stakeholder roundtables, we talked to a number of people and we call the housing realm, housing ecosystem, developers, lenders, realtors, social service providers, nonprofit housing providers, a wide range of individuals to understand their perspective on housing needs. We, of course, started with the Steering Committee kickoff in October and again had the great conversation this morning with that group. And a couple of members are here tonight. We had about 1,400 responses from the housing needs survey, which in our experience for a city of that size, that's a very good response rate. And, and we're continuing to learn a lot from that survey about what some of the challenges residents are facing. And we, we issued that existing trend, excuse me, existing conditions trends analysis report, the Housing Snapshot, that again, we'll continue to refine some of the data points in here as we, as we need to and learn more. So some of the key themes we've heard so far, and some of the data has supported this, is the condition of rental, rental housing is a major concern, particularly in the older areas of the city. We've heard, heard and see from the MLS data, sales trends and conversations with realtors that home prices are rising dramatically and that it's kind of challenges people's expectations about what kind of home they'll be able to get or, and a number of other factors. You know, young professionals, particularly in other new residents are having, having a hard time finding suitable options in their price range and what they want for their lifestyle. And low-income households are having a hard time finding quality housing they can afford. We also heard that people love the walkable neighborhoods in Manhattan and would, would like to see more diverse housing options in those areas. And so when we think about housing and this project, we like to say that housing impacts everything. Stable housing and having the right housing stock, you know, helps children perform better in school. It improves people's health, mental health and physical health, and improves job performance. We know housing is a huge economic development driver, just the development and operation of housing. And a number of other things, it impacts the community and stabilizes neighborhoods. But what makes it suitable? It's different for a lot of individuals. We might have six different, you know, opinions about what makes housing suitable just with, with you all sitting up there. It's what's affordable to a household or family or student. It's, is it located by work or amenities that households want to be around? Is it stable, healthy and safe? So all these things, all of these aspects create this idea of suitability that does vary for different households, families, and individuals. And next, Justin and Miriam are going to walk through some of the key findings and data points that we've looked at.
Thank you, Andy. Good evening. So before Miriam jumps into the Manhattan-specific context and themes, I think it's important for us to kind of make sure we step back and just understand the national and statewide context as it relates to housing. As we all know, housing is in the national and statewide conversation right now in a lot of different ways. And so just want to give you some quick hits on, on how we see that kind of permeating, you know, really all of the conversations that we have around housing in, in all of the communities that we work in. You know, with that national context, one of the things that we're seeing and we hear about all the time, and I'm sure you do too, is the increase in construction costs for housing. Since 2001, just in the last, you know, 20 years or so, there's been a, almost a doubling, a 100% increase in housing construction costs and a 40% jump just in the last, you know, seven years or so. We're feeling that across the spectrum of housing and it's, you know, results unsurprisingly in rising prices. And then increase in home prices, 60% over their 2,000 level. So 60% increase in, in prices over the last 20 years means that, you know, for a generation now trying to buy a house or coming into the rental market, it looks very different than it did the generation before. We're also hearing, you know, very much across the country and across the university systems and the college systems across the country, declining enrollment. You know, since 2010, there's been a two and a half percent decline in enrollment. And certainly we know that there's been enrollment impacts due to COVID. And I think we're still going to be finding out and figuring out what the new equilibrium is, what is the new data point around enrollment. But certainly in the last, you know, several years, in the last couple of years with the pandemic, we've, we've continued to see that trend happening, escalating. And it'll be interesting to see how much of that rebounds and what the impact is that that declining enrollment will have on the housing markets of our college towns. Within the state context, you know, the, the state of Kansas was looking at, you know, their statewide housing assessment. And this, you know, fact coming out of that is that Kansas population is converging more towards the metropolitan areas such as Manhattan. So that's really creating, you know, a shift. And it's just, it's one more component of that shift of people moving into a housing market. And what does that mean for these metropolitan areas to provide the kind of housing needed for the populations that they have as well as this migration from other parts of the state? And a part of that, not only is, is migration into the metropolitan areas, but the aging of the population. And I'm sure this is again, kind of, you know, within the housing conversation, not a new conversation to all of you. Our growing senior population, you know, means that, you know, they have different needs of affordability, different needs of housing amenities. Where are their, where is their housing? Are they wanting to move to different types of housing because their family and household dynamics have changed as they age and as they're empty nesters and, you know, continuing to retire and get on fixed income? What is the dynamic of that certainly impacting housing? And then, you know, then there's just the, the, the housing affordability challenges within the state. And a quick analysis, looking at the ratio of housing values to home, to homeowner income, the ratio of that was the largest in Riley County of all of the counties in the state. And so again, just kind of giving you some, some context, some national and statewide context. And then certainly as we come down into, into the region and into Manhattan, starting to understand what are the local contexts. And the last thing that I'll end with before handing it off to Miriam here is just, you know, we understand that from a, from a, kind of that context, the unique context that Manhattan has of possibly, you know, of being, you know, having very limited places for the city to expand. You know, conversations about the city, you know, in, in a lot of ways being landlocked. With topography out west, you've got the, the rivers in the floodplain to the, to the south and the east. You've got the institutional, you know, you've got the institutions of Fort Riley and KSU and the property that they own really constraining the ability for the city to expand and find new places outside of the existing city limits for, for new growth. So what does that mean as we consider housing? And as we consider, you know, where is that? Where's, where are the opportunities for expanded growth and development within the city limits or infill? And it certainly points in that direction as you begin to layer these different constraints at the, at the local context. And so that's the backdrop, I think, from a, from a national and state and regional context. And Miriam is going to jump into some of the local ones.
All right. Thank you, Justin, and good evening all. So as you know from the snapshot, we've collected a lot of data and are doing more analysis, some of which we'll be presenting tonight. And this is all just setting a foundation for conversation and then for moving into our next phase around strategy. But what we wanted to share tonight to, you know, have a conversation with you all are some of the, you know, the six kind of top key takeaways from that initial analysis. So this is our first, that, you know, the data does reinforce the point that Manhattan has a workforce housing problem in a couple of different dimensions. And I think one way to look at it, or one way we think about housing affordability is that housing wage, right? So what is that rent needed to afford not just any, but a safe, quality, decent, two-bedroom unit plus utilities? And in Manhattan, that's about $900 a month. And if you think about what is that hourly wage needed to afford them that unit, that's about $19 per hour in Manhattan. And when we match that up with what the economic development picture or what the growing jobs in the region are projected over the next decade, you can see, you know, a broad range in job sectors that are projected to grow. So here, the average salaries in each of these different sectors, from professional, scientific, and technical service, services, educational services, construction, support services, transportation, and healthcare. And then what is that projected new growth? Now matching that up then against that housing wage, you know, there are people with some of those jobs in growing sectors that are falling below that housing wage. So what are the ways to, to support them as part of supporting the growing economy? And another way we are looking at, at this is focusing on that young professional population, right? So as Andy mentioned, this is something we heard that especially young professionals, those perhaps graduating from college or coming to Manhattan to find a job, deciding where to live in the region, they really struggle to find quality, suitable options. And so we took a look at that. And here comparing Manhattan to some of its peer cities. So cities like Leavenworth, Lawrence, Iowa City, and others who have a similar demographic and population size with a similar university and military presence in their economy. How does Manhattan compare to them in terms of attracting and retaining that 25 to 34-year-old age group? Then also, how does Manhattan compare to some of its neighbors in the region, right? So Lina, Topeka, Junction City. So what you can see here is Manhattan is really outpacing other cities in the region, attracting and retaining far more young professionals. But compared to many of its peers in other parts of the Midwest and beyond, Manhattan really is lagging a bit in terms of attracting and retaining that 25 to 34-year-old population. Part of that, what we heard and what we feel the data really bears out is that there's a mismatch between what people can afford and what is available. And so here's kind of the, you know, one broad way to look at that. What is that comparison between the median sales price and the median household income? And you can see that median price is a little bit above what a household with a median income could attain. Now, you know, new home sale prices are quite a bit above that affordability level of the median household. And two, looking again at that young workforce population, you can see, you know, those looking for a home in that 180,000 to 200,000 range, new homes are going to be far out of reach. And while there might be homes priced in an attainable reach, there's a real shortage of supply. And so I'm going to come back to that topic in just a moment. Here too, on the subject of home values, we ran this, a similar peer comparison. So how do home values in Manhattan compare to those of regional neighbors and also peer cities? Here again, you can see Manhattan is really at the high end of its peers in the Midwest, really pushing past Lawrence, past Columbia, Missouri, past Lincoln, and at the top end of this range of those peer cities in the Midwest. A third finding is that home prices are steadily increasing and in the case of new homes, have increased quite rapidly. Here's what that trajectory has looked like over the previous 10 years. You can see existing homes in blue, a 16% increase over the previous decade, and new homes in green, a 50% increase. So in many, in many cases or in many ways, this reflects what Justin mentioned about those rapidly escalating construction prices. That's just the price angle of it though. But looking at availability in terms of the homes on the market and how, how long they stay on the market, we see a pretty rapid decline in the MLS data in both cases. Starting even before some of the pressures in the market resulting from COVID naturally, that the signs of a tight market in terms of homes being snatched up really quickly by buyers begin in 2018. And now, existing homes where there's, you know, a real strong demand and a real short supply, for every home that sells, it sells an average of $20,000 above listing, which just shows how competitive the market is for those existing homes priced in that range, attainable to that young workforce population and others. Part of the story, though not, though not all, is a little bit of a slowdown in the creation of new single-family supply within the city of Manhattan. And so without adding supply, that, you know, is contributing to a tightening of the market of existing and new homes. This permit data reflects just the city of Manhattan, but we also looked at this regionally in Riley, Geary, and Potawatomi Counties. And it actually has a similar arc, a little bit of a slowdown in the addition of new housing supply to the market, rental and for sale. A fourth finding is that, you know, there are many residents, especially renters, who are struggling to make monthly housing, monthly housing payments, especially rent, like I said, in addition to other basic costs of living. A sort of standard metric for looking at this is cost burden, which is the number of, in this case renters who are paying above that 30% affordability threshold of their income toward housing. So you can see just over half of all renters in the city of Manhattan are by this definition cost burdened. And some, as you can see, nearly a quarter of renters paying over half of their income. Now, of course, students represent a part of this rental market, a major important part. And so here again, we looked at this comparison to see Manhattan is compared to some of its peers that have a similar university presence. I know neither an outlier nor immune from some of these challenges impacting renters. Fifth, something we heard consistently in conversations with stakeholders and community members is concerns about the condition of Manhattan's older housing stock. Now, this is something that's really hard to put data to. And so we took the opportunity of the survey to ask the community, you know, what has their experience been with confronting conditions issues with the housing stock? And what are the types of issues most commonly that they see? So just over half of all respondents reported in the survey that they've encountered housing with significant repair needs. And here were kind of some of the top challenges that survey respondents reported they encountered. So just about half of all respondents, leaky, drafty windows. Almost two in five respondents, mold or water damage. Almost as many plumbing, electrical, or mechanical systems issues, basement units without proper egress, and so on. And then a final finding, you know, again, not, not new to, you know, those of you here tonight, is that the region's reliance and, you know, the presence of major institutions, Kansas State University, Fort Riley, and others creates, you know, very unique housing dynamics in the market. And it's probably impossible to capture the full scope of that complexity just here in these slides. But a couple of, of points, you know, just about the sort of longstanding high rate of renters in the community. And, you know, looking at the historical data, we say, see this wavering up and down. But hovering around 60% is the share of households who rent, far above that of the state of Kansas or, you know, the nation. And so you're just representing that renters do and are a very large part of the market. And finally, this slide, we had a composed or, you know, put together to represent what we have heard and understand to be that Manhattan is really at an inflection point in the market. Where after several years of a decline in enrollment of KSU students, a decline in university student population from any number of institutions in the region, yet, you know, steady household growth, the market's in a bit of a transition where student-oriented rental options are at higher vacancies than have been seen historically. There's less pressure on that part of the rental market, but still, you know, strong, strong demand in other parts of the rental market that are less student-oriented. And all of that student-oriented supply, some of it has the potential to be reconverted to help solve some of these supply shortages, of course, affecting first-time home buyers and otherwise. But that transition takes time and is something, as, as Andy mentioned, is that we're still, you know, wanting to see how that's playing out. It's a transition that's happening as we speak. And so we'll be checking in on that market data this spring and beyond. And so with that, before we jump ahead into the next section of the presentation about future housing demand, we want to pause and answer any questions you might all have about what we've presented so far or questions in the Housing Snapshot that you might have.
He didn't mention anything about the impact of the Army Basic Allowance for Quarters. Because it's interesting that like, you know, a private E1 who has no dependents gets $858 a month, which is tax-free. And, and so when you look at, you know, the impact of Fort Riley and if you're, you know, if you're a lieutenant colonel, you know, married, you get, you know, $1,898 or so. And I think a lot of people in the rental business sort of look, look at that as a metric on what they can get for their, you know, properties. So I think... So I think it's just a relevant thing to, especially since Fort Riley has such a major impact on the city.
Yeah, I really appreciate that comment. That was feedback we also got, you know, a little bit from a different angle this morning, but during our steering committee conversation. I think that's a really understanding kind of the market and market response of military personnel and families will need to be part of how we refine demand going forward. I appreciate that.
This is Commissioner Reddy. You said, and in the documents, it said anything from $17 to $19 as far as wages and looking at affordability. But I didn't see a metric for if it was a, how you define household. So if it's a two-income household, because if you're just looking at an individual that lives there, but there was like three different couples and singles and all of these factors that go into it, even though you looked at it hourly, if you're talking, if we're looking at workforce housing, I think it would be good to have an idea of the income of a single individual with a profession and a couple. So if you have two couples that say at best are making 45 apiece, that's different than just one individual. So I, I would like to see something about that. And you showed a metric there about jobs and retaining and recruiting and how it's different and how Manhattan lines up and all of those also. But I didn't know if there was a correlation between our housing and retaining and recruitment. Retaining and recruitment also comes because of jobs. So is the priority, we're not getting employees or workforce here because of housing or because of jobs? I think that needs to be clarified, otherwise the conclusion here seems to be it's because of jobs, I mean because of housing. So I think that's something I just need a little bit more information about.
Yeah, great. We can provide that. On the second question about, you know, is it housing, is it jobs? And I'll, you know, invite Andy and Justin to respond to you, but a couple of thoughts that it, it is really difficult to tease apart, but in our conversations with major employers and with representatives from the chamber, we, we have heard at least, you know, the perspective that housing contributes to some of the economic development and retention challenges. How much a part of the challenge is it is hard, hard, hard to say, but it is a contributor. But I think you're right, it goes the other direction too. If there's no job for a recent graduate in whatever industry they're specialized in, why stay? Why look for housing? And on the specific definition of a household and making sure our analysis reflects the specific variety of types of households, in terms of size and also number of income earners, just want to say I very much appreciate that question. In some of our demand analysis, you'll see some data that starts to get at that. And I think we can do more to kind of paint a picture and analysis of, you know, what are the experiences of different types of households and how, how they're, how prevalent are those experiences in the market?
And I think when I think about rentals and students, as you noticed, you mentioned we have 57% rentals. So when I think of students, most students have a roommate or two or three. And there was also mention in your documents that freshmen at Kansas State University are going to be required to stay in the dorms. So that would be one individual in one room, and I don't know what their cost is for that dorm room for the year or semester, but however they pay for that.
I'd just like to talk about the, the cost of new construction. I think part of that has got to be, the houses being built are probably in Miller Ranch and Colbert Hills area where the lots are 40, 50, 60,000 to start with. Is there any place in town anymore, like that North Wing or whatever off of Marlon? Is there any place in town where they're building $200,000 houses? Is there any land left for $200,000 houses? Or is it all in the high-end neighborhoods with $10,000 a year in special assessments? Go.
Will do. Chad Bungger, Assistant Director with Community Development. We do have putting some fishing touches on our residential land absorption map that gets to that. But there is a chunk of land, the North Wing you mentioned, for single-family homes there. They're getting close to building out their first two phases, but they have several phases to the north of there. The other areas of platted land, the stone hedge, head, stone hen, can't talk, off of Miller Parkway. So in that Miller Parkway area, that's probably of a higher caliper, if you will. And then there's a, a couple of subdivisions in the Grandmere Hartford area. So all those will probably be towards the higher end. A lot of it is just a matter of who controls land and are, are ready to develop it, and it's be quite the stretch for the city to go in and say, hey, we're going to develop the land for you, kind of sort of thing. But we, we're getting close to needing to probably see what more land could be developed, I guess, for, and that's a part of the problem or part of the thought.
That's the thing, I was curious, is there, is, is there any affordable land that you could build affordable, let more affordable? Because even, I don't know, out there west of Scenic Drive, as you go back up in there, if you go to the top of the hill, obviously those are half a million dollar plus. I don't know if there's anything left that's not already built on out there, but even those have got to be 250, probably 1,000 by now. So I don't know, we're just in a terrific conundrum of we ain't got no land to build anything on that's not in the city. And so I think, yeah, the question has become, how can we, yeah, make existing land in town that doesn't have specials and can be more affordable? And so I'm looking forward to your bright ideas on that, because it's been a fairly unsolvable problem based on the fact that we've been talking about this for 20 years.
Commissioner, I'd just add that I think it's the matching question, that is there a developer that's willing to reduce their price of their product and build something lower based on the return they expect to have as a builder. I think the land is available, but whether or not they're going to price that, what few homes they build in a particular year, at what level, that's going to generate the return for them that they're looking for. Because even out in Blue Township, I don't know offhand what that average price is, but they're pretty high. And that's pretty buildable land.
They're comparable to North Wing, which is 250-some thousand and higher, actually. We see the building permits. I think we get a report periodically.
And the thing is, is I don't, I don't think it's the city's place to, to get ourselves into the business of telling developers, well, yeah, somehow, if they can, if they can, especially if there's demand and they can sell them for 250,000, there's no reason to sell, build houses itself for 20, 220,000 that they can, don't make very much money on. So, yeah, it's, it's a heck of a conundrum, because I have, I just don't see how, if you, if you, I've always thought if there's some free market solution to this thing, that's what I want. If there's some way that we can sort of incentivize the neighborhood redevelopment program thing or something that's not a 52-page application, I'd like to do that. And so I just don't know what the, outside of just the government throwing some money at something to try to make it more affordable, I'm not interested in that, but I am interested in figuring out. And, yeah, the state used to have tax credits for affordable housing. I suppose those have all dried up and stopped. I don't suppose the city, even if we had a pile of money, we don't, we can't give anybody tax credits for nothing, because the city, other than property tax, and then that's, then we're picking and choosing winners and losers, and I don't think we want to go there either. So I'm looking forward to the next phase here, see what you guys can come up with.
So just a question, you were talking about, you know, how the houses are selling so fast in town and going for a premium, and we didn't have the building permits. And you said that that was pretty comparable in Potawatomi and Geary County and around. But when I look at Potawatomi County, the last decade, they had like a 17% population growth. There's a lot of new housing that we just looked at an area of possibly annexing, and we've heard from our own developers, the frustration of people, since they started building out in Potawatomi County, people aren't building in town because of the, it's cheaper out there and lower taxes. So just your response to that, and did you look at the tax rates as also part of the reasons for, you know, the unaffordable cost?
Well, I was gonna go back real quickly. You are correct, there has been more building in Potawatomi County. The trend has been, although there's been more single-family development than in Manhattan, it has still like decreased over the past few years, the number of units built. So there is a trend regionally for like the delivery of supply has diminished from, from like previous years, and that's, that's created some of the price increase. Now, there's still been growth out there, there's still been development, but more broadly, permit activity and development activity has crept down, which is part of the, the dynamic we're, we're dealing with.
The other question is you looked at, obviously from the newer people buying homes, and, you know, it's, we can see what's happening there. But we're talking about the rentals being uncompetitive and can't get a wage to, to afford them. But did you look at the supply of the rentals as well? Because I know when talking to landlords, and I talked to a number of landlords today, know we're gonna have this meeting, and while it's improved a little bit, they're still telling me it's pretty high vacancy rates. They really don't have the opportunity to increase their rental cost. In fact, some are saying I haven't increased rents in like 10 years out there. So it's kind of an interesting dynamic. It's like, we're saying we don't have affordable housing, but yet we have a high vacancy and people who don't feel like they can increase their cost. And in fact, what they say is, we've had new units coming into town, and it's like they lose people to those new units, even though the new units are more expensive, because lowering their price doesn't help, because people want the new units. And they're saying if it's three to five years old, the people don't even consider it new anymore. So...
During our steering committee conversation, we have a couple of property management representatives, and we, they helped us unpack that a little bit, like, and, and it is complex here. There's the student housing rental market, then there's the outside of student housing rental market. And, you know, what we've seen in the data and what, what they told us is that absolutely vacancies increased with student housing. One of the, the dynamics playing into that is all of the new units that were added in the mid 2010s while enrollment started to come down. So you do have new product that is desirable. A lot of the newer properties are performing better than the older properties. And then we heard, you know, outside of the student housing market, particularly single-family rentals, there's for, for non-students, for families, and, you know, and other individuals, it's very tight, like it's hard to find a rental there. So yes, we heard all of that, and it's part of that challenge and the inflection point of, you know, what's the transition that needs to happen? If enrollment doesn't come back, then some of those units might need to, if, if they are in homes that have been converted, converted back to single-family or some mechanism to encourage, you know, renovation or something like that. But it, it is a challenge that's present today. Very much appreciate that question.
Yeah, but what I've heard on that front too is that a lot of the students are, even though it's not only is enrollment down, but a lot of the students are changing their preference of they would rather go for that one or two-bedroom apartment versus that house that has a half dozen kids in it, even though they're not supposed to have half-dozen, and getting that, that cheaper rent. So that's hurting that investment that's going on there. To the market's point, well, I don't like the government approach either. I think that's, those houses are in a lot of areas that are closer into town that would be walkable and that, and we could preserve the tax base by doing an abatement just for an appreciation on an investment for so many years to try to get them to convert those to, to something we could use.
Do you guys have a theory as to with the increasing demand, while the number of new family homes has continued to decrease over the last five or six years, why, why are they, why is somebody not building houses if there's demand? Did, did anybody offer an opinion during the discussion on any of that?
Yes, we did talk to a number of developers and kind of more broadly in other markets we're working in, as I think builders are doing the best they can, and they're focusing on, you know, the product they do well that makes a good profit right now, because they can sell it. But also there's a labor shortage, there's a construction material cost challenge and supply chain shortage. So it's really is forcing them to focus on what they can sustain their, their business model with, and they just can't build things fast enough.
Yeah, based on the ability to get materials and help. Well, and I, I think it seemed like back seven, 10 years ago, it seemed like every Tom, Dick, and Harry construction company was coming to Manhattan to slap together some houses quickly, and they may have gone back under their rock, wherever that was. And so that, that's probably a part of it too, because, because there used to be all kinds of construction signs around town of people, it's like, who's that? And then now, now they're long gone again too. And so we, just the local ones that have stayed around are, I suppose, are, you know, doing the best they can.
It's the free market and the city doesn't have control over who builds what. We had an apartment complex with over 600 units, and they went by all the rules and they're up and going. And it really was a shock to the rental market here. And it has continued to have an impact, but we also have a lot of single-family homes near the university that somebody buys a couple of them and pops up a four-story apartment building. So the, it's, the builders are, and investors are in, in charge of their own destiny. And so when there's an oversupply, it's nothing that the city should have to do anything about. It is a business decision, as far as I'm concerned. But I wanted to ask you about the, the data that you're using for the housing study. Is it the 2020 census or are you using 2010?
We look at as much as we can. The 2020 census data is very high level so far, so like population and households and a little bit more beyond that. So we don't have the income data, the housing unit data that we had in the last census. We use a service called ESRI that, that updates estimates every year based on American Community Survey, which is, you know, census-driven, but they also look at things like postal service data as to where mails delivered, school enrollment data, where possible, like public utility hookups, and school enrollment, things to kind of get that interim data that's, that's reliable. So we, we use a number of those, those things to, to get as accurate as we can. That's part of why we have these conversations. Sometimes we hear from the school district, well, we show like we've kind of plateaued, but the last two years we've increased enrollment so much, so we think our population's growing. That, that's not the conversation here, that's just an example. Like, we, we do try to balance the best data available today with those conversations to make sure that when we get to these population projections, we're within the realm of reason. And, you know, thanks, you know, over a 20-year projection, a lot can change. You know, you could get a big, you know, an economic development win. You know, you could increase enrollment by 2,000 in a year. I, you know, there's a lot that can come into play, but we try to be reasonable based on the, but what we know today and where, where we think things are going.
I was somewhat surprised by the 57% rental figure. I expected it to be higher, because that is very much the 2010 data. And with, you know, the, the rentals that have popped up here, but our slower-growth housing has not kept up with the number of rentals. Anyway, just I, so maybe by August, we have some 2020 data. I want the, the, you know, best we can do. And I wondered how you are incorporating our, or factoring into our housing study, the Kansas housing study that has, is now, is finished, right? And so there should be data from it that is, helps to inform this housing study, I would think.
You've looked at that more than, than I have.
Yeah, I can answer. Is this?
If you have to speak into each one of them, you can't... If, you have to speak into each one of them, you can't stand in the middle.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
So two of you is fine.
Just to answer, yeah, we did review that in, in detail and appreciated, you know, of course, the statewide scope. And also some of those region-specific identification of needs and also of um, you know, possible strategies coming out of that assessment. And so actually in the community survey, we um, took that as an opportunity to, to say, you know, hey, these were some ideas emerging from the state housing assessment. What is the Manhattan community-specific um, response to these ideas? And so, uh, like Andy said, we're still, um, you know, looking at that survey data. But those are, those are two ways. Definitely got some valuable information um, about statewide trends and also trends in the broader um, region that Manhattan's operating within.
Yeah, I just have one more.
We're in the question mode, I think we're midway through their presentation.
The, for the rentals, you talked about students a lot. Uh, in future, for future information, can you also give us, you know, you said the senior citizens are also, uh, you know, are they in rentals or are they in homes? I don't know. So just to dissect that rental property and between students, professionals and senior citizens.
And I just wanted to add is, cause we were talking about, you know, the free market and what it's going to do. One of the things we may want to look at, cause I'm looking at a page here from Wealth Management Magazine. And they have a nice picture of Manhattan, Kansas in a recent article. It says, "Competition pushes real estate investors into tertiary markets. Apartment investors are jumping at the chance to buy properties in Manhattan at six percent cap rates." Manhattan, Kansas, that is. Buyers that used to dismiss such tertiary markets as flyover country are now stopping by to take a second look. And you know, what that could mean for the market. I know at least one person in town who's had investors approached them to buy a significant amount of uh, property. And basically it's saying as they're looking at these other areas and can't get the cap rates, they're looking at, you know, areas and we made the top of their list.
That is a, a trend we're seeing. Thank you.
Are there other questions before they proceed? Okay, please.
Okay, well, thank you so much for that discussion and, and we'll definitely work on the follow-up information you asked for. In terms of future demand, we look at it in a number of different ways. And I'm gonna present some of it here and we'll have more in the coming weeks that define those sub-markets. Some of what you asked for and more. We, we look at resident affordability and we try to look at it, you know, in, in the lens of, you know, in terms of homeownership, it's, we, we consider, you know, mortgage rates, taxes and insurance, your down payment trends and, you know, PMI when it comes into play. There's kind of a rule of thumb that, something that is attainable where you, you know, that provides a stable financial foundation is, is three times your income. And, and the rental side, it's thirty percent of your, your income on rent. So those are some of the underlying assumptions for what's, you know, affordable or attainable for households that we look at. So that people are not cost burdened and have a stable housing situation. We also look at growth projections. We will, um, you know, follow up with some of the senior demand information. And market segmentation, we'll start to answer that, what, what are these different sub-markets? So, um, you know, you asked about, what are we talking about household income? Now, these are averages at these different levels of area median income. Your median household income for a, um, what's the median household size? Two-point? Two-person household is about your median household size. So this sixty-two thousand dollars a year is the median income for Manhattan. And so we start to break it down into these different categories. Some is because of HUD definitions, some is from discussion um, in the community. To, to understand what are these different market segments? You know, and again, this does differ from household to household, but the, this is the average, the high-level look. And so we looked at city of Manhattan as a whole. Then we tried to extract the student population because of the challenges of student income versus what parents are paying, et cetera. To kind of get to these uh, attainability levels of what, what's reasonable. You know, when we talk about the workforce housing initiative, you know, it's generally falls in this moderate income. You know, at the kind of lower end, the fifty thousand dollar range, that could be teachers, nurses, police officers, et cetera. Get to the higher end of the, the range, you get into some of the technical, you know, construction trades can get there, um, et cetera. And, and so that's, that's something we unpack as part of the, the process of looking at demand. We also want to look at how, how's the community likely to grow? Um, and, and in looking at this, we looked at a lot of different things. Um, we looked at your past growth, we looked at some projections that we have. And so we kind of got to a moderate rate of point-six percent annual growth, which is similar to the last decade. So you would add about twenty-six hundred households in the next twenty years if that continued. We also thought, you know, we're, Manhattan's facing some headwinds with the developable, developable land challenge. And maybe the need to transition to some different housing types and do some infill. And maybe it'll slow down a little bit. So we wanted a conservative and moderate approach. And then we understand, you know, there's a recent annexation study. If Manhattan does choose that it makes sense to annex, you know, this is to the east. You know, you would gain some households that are already there, but also some of the rapid growth. So you could see, you know, even more growth there if, if annexation occurs. You know, this is one piece of the puzzle. How does growth impact the need for more housing units? And then we, we looked at, you know, again, I'll follow, we'll follow up with senior demands specifically. Um, but what specific groups might Manhattan attract? And what we use is this market segmentation data. This is from Esri, which I mentioned as that, data provider. And they combine a number of different statistics. Uh, household incomes, age, professions, education levels, household size. Is it a two-parent household? Are there children? Is it a single household? Uh, what are their preferences? What are their common occupations? Um, this helps us to get to what types of housing do we need to support growth um, in these areas? We, these are not our names, um, some of them are kind of funny. And these are from Esri, I'd just like to point that out, so you don't question my sanity on some of the names. These are the dominant groups, the top groups in Manhattan, but these are not all of the groups. So college towns make sense, because you're a college town. Right, young professionals, dorm students diplomas, uh, which is, you know, here as well. And, and style is kind of the, you know, median age of forty-two, the, the family um, segment. And so that has implications on, on home price affordability because of household income and what preferences they may be, may have. This is a lot, who, who lives in a lot of the rental housing and some of the more modest, uh, single-family homes, homeowner situations. We also looked more broadly at the region to understand where growth is that the city could capture if you had the right or, or a more diverse housing stock. These groups are growing the, at a rate in the region that is higher than Manhattan. Uh, it's family landscapes, it's Gen X urban, middle ground, Midtown singles, scholars and patriots. And we looked at those top five groups in terms of growth and that are likely to continue to grow. And so these, these households or these segmentation groups, you are growing in the region. And Manhattan's not capturing its share. So what would it take to capture these? Are these um, market segments that are a priority to attract here? You know, the workday drive is, is a lot of, you know, young families that are choosing to commute to work in Manhattan and live outside of the city. And, and this is the kind of median price for each group that you would need to attract those here. So in terms of new construction, we have a challenge. Um, but there could be more challenge in renovating or, or modernizing some of the existing homes. And so this, this will help inform, you know, you need X number of single-family homes in this price range, uh, which, which will come as we refine this. And so we looked at, okay, since we're looking at the region, what could Manhattan capture? This is based on kind of things today. And if it would continue, we need about twenty-five hundred units, which kind of supports our more conservative growth projection. And this is based on, again, those jobs, um, a number of different factors on, on who's living here today. And then if you captured a bit more, because you have that, you know, lifestyle and housing stock that, that people want, you know, it could be reasonably up to four thousand units. Um, but we need a, a more diverse housing stock. And so overall, where we're at today, again, we're refining this and we're, we're definitely refining those sub-markets. Students, seniors, young professionals, et cetera. You know, we, we see a need for at least twenty-five hundred new units over the next twenty years. We think a good portion of this demand can be met by renovating existing housing if, if we start to, to, to create that churn at this inflection point. Um, and, and then there's seventeen hundred to thirty-two hundred in net new demand. And the question is, you know, where, where do these go? And at what, what density? What's the product that will help make this happen? We also broke this down and we'll have, again, a lot more detail behind this in the, the report. But what does demand look like across, you know, the different income ranges? One thing that is unique in Manhattan is that you have pretty strong demand in each market segment. Like, you know, there's a little bit of variation, but there's going to be continued demand um, for the higher income housing that's being produced um, today. But also a need for the moderate and, and more affordable housing. You know, we want to tie it back to workforce housing range because the, the workforce housing, you know, initiative and funds that will come available is, is an important piece of this study. An important piece in the broader toolbox that we'll be thinking about in strategic framework. And we think there's going to be a need for five hundred to seven hundred units in this, um, you know, kind of range of a hundred fifty to three hundred thousand dollars for, for sale. And one of the challenges, and this is like a lot of the points you've been raising, um, is right now, most of the housing types to build it new today requires support when we're, we go below the, the higher income range. And that's why we're not seeing it built. And um, one of the reasons. So that's, that's one of the considerations moving forward as to what incentives make sense for Manhattan. What other things can be done by aligning um, policies and initiatives? People are doing maybe a different type of housing product, et cetera. And so what does this look like in terms of, you know, density and land use? It would require about a hundred forty to two hundred sixty acres for the new construction. And so where, where's that land? Where will we find that land? Are there infill spots that make sense? Um, are there spots on the peripheries where we might have to go up from two to three units, an acre, to accommodate the growth? So that's really, at a high level, you know, what's needed to support growth going forward. And so kind of the discussion is, obviously, do you have any more questions for us about this? But also what does it raise for you about policies and strategies? What, what do you think is acceptable, you know, for the city to think about and, you know, helping to create, create the framework where this housing is, is possible? Are there any questions or comments?
Well, if you're just asking what things do we think could be possible, I'll just say it again. It's something that I brought up at the retreat, which is, you know, in some of these older, say, older, older neighborhoods, more in-town neighborhoods, where we know there's, you know, a lot of dilapidated, some even, you know, condemned properties and properties that need to be fixed up. Could we have some sort of renewal-type program? We don't want to lose the tax base that we have. But could we have some sort of tax abatement for appreciation for ten years or something like that? To kind of ensure growth in there. And that's something, if you can work it into your study, to possibly identify areas around town where there, you know, would be neighborhoods where we could possibly do that, where there's enough of that, where it could make a difference. Uh, and we do have COVID money that, you know, has a lot for sewer systems. We have troubles with those like clay pipes and things like that. Also, we've got a lot of sidewalk issues in those neighborhoods. So maybe we could come up with some success stories in some of those areas where we could come up with a revitalization program and, you know, see what we could do. And then again, they're closer into town and so they're walkable and those type of things and closer to amenities. But just a question for you on ideas um, for helping with the cost. Have you looked much at modular homes? I've been intrigued mainly from looking at these from investment purposes. There's a lot of companies out there, a lot of factories being built to make modular homes. And they're not what you think of as modular homes. I mean, they're making million-dollar homes and putting on cliffs in California. They're doing condos, they're doing hotels. Um, and they can usually get about a twenty percent reduction in the production cost of it. You just have to make sure you have a road where you can get the pieces there, once they're built in the factory. So just curious, in your work that you've done, is that becoming a more, you know, accepted or viable thing people are looking at?
I think the answer is yes. And I think, um, but it's also yes for the coast. The biggest challenge in, in the Midwest right now is that supply chain and transportation costs to get, having the factory close enough where it's reasonable to get, get it here. Is the biggest constraint I've seen, cause we don't have production nearby.
Building going on in area to make a factory viable to, to put in.
And something that I know is happening in Tulsa, there's a company that manufactures panels. And they actually do, they're insulated panels, very, very energy efficient, which helps with long-term affordability um, and maintenance. But they can't deliver a unit cheaper. They can deliver it at the same price much, much faster. Because it's, you know, it's assembled on-site in panels instead of stick, stick-built. The, that, that's happening in, in the general region. But there, there's definitely a need for that thinking and to get, you know, what's the framework needed to support getting that here? Because I think it's, it, it would definitely help in Manhattan, it would help in Kansas. So, yes.
Okay, just curious on that.
So is this a projection for like twenty years? When you say we need eight hundred units or seventeen hundred units?
Yes.
Is this a twenty-year projection then?
Yes.
Okay. And because I think a lot of things shift, I mean, we may annex by then, I don't know. But there's also, um, in some of your other slides after this, uh, I like some of the ideas of having a variety of types of housing. Not just the typical ones that we have now, but even, um, you know, more and more types of duplexes or more types of townhomes or, or something like that or more, something you said. There's also conversations about tiny homes and I don't know where we would place them. But there are, those types of conversations are still happening. So I think, um, if we look into twenty years and as we plan ahead with that sales tax put away for some of these things, there, there is potential for incentives for new developers and there's more and more developers that are gonna come. I think this, I'm hoping that this supply chain shortage and workforce shortage is temporary. I'm hoping it's just as people come out of the pandemic, that it's going to, things are progressing so quickly that maybe in about two years, we will probably, hopefully be back where we need to be in all of those areas. Uh, I know it's hard to predict, but I see a lot more people hiring and a lot more jobs being created. And even wages going up and such. So I don't know if you can project that into what that looks like. Because I think this is still, what we're seeing this, this year and last year is kind of an anomaly. People are outbidding the houses by twenty thousand, thirty thousand. And I've gotten phone calls if I'm interested in selling my house and I'm not interested in it. So there's realtors already searching for people wanting. So there's realtors already searching for people wanting to sell their house because there's such a high demand already.
Thank you. And this, well, did you have a?
No, I just, uh, was appreciated Commissioner Reddy's, um, opening up the discussion to different and new rather than what we've always been doing. And so it would be good to have put that on your radar too. I know that with our senior citizen, it's, it's growing. It's not heavy growth, but it is growing. And I think we need, I agree, we need some more senior options. But, um, we've talked about tiny homes. We've, we've, you know, uh, as long as modular homes are considered mobile homes for, and have to be placed in, you know, certain places. Well, I don't know that, see? So, uh, it's just the, causing us to think in new terms and consider new options rather than what we've, um, been doing. But we do have some housing stock issues. And we, we need some, um, recommendations, to tell you the truth, for what to do about it. What can we do? Because what we've been doing has not been working. You can tell in the older neighborhoods. And, uh, we have increasing pressure to, um, impose more density on those older neighborhoods. Oh, we've got five bedrooms in that house. By golly, we ought to be able to have five tenants in that house. And, but the parking is still a one-lane into the garage type. I'm just saying that, that kind of pressure, uh, is, uh, is, is heavy on neighborhoods and causes consequences and unkept properties. We have plenty of those, every community does, we're not unique. I can tell from other places where you travel. But some recommendations would be good. I mean, if we get anything out of the housing study, it ought to be, we also need to talk about revitalizing our existing housing stock. And not just us throwing money at it. How can we incentivize, um, owners and, um, others to work on it? To, to help him, help us improve the, the quality in the community?
And I'd be interested in, I don't know if you've explored it, you know, special taxes. I've talked to a number of builders in town, and they don't really like our special tax structure for various reasons. And part of it is, you know, especially on the western side of town, it's a little bit harder to, uh, you know, develop a lot than it is over in Pot County. Because, you know, it's like a milo field, we got rock over here on the other side. And so you've got very expensive specials, and then that drives up the cost of the house. And, and just, just curious if there's any, you know, alternatives to that. And we've done it, you know, this way for many years, so we're sort of used to it. But I know places like Olathe, they don't do it that way at all. And, and I'd be interested in seeing if there's some alternatives there that might address, uh, you know, some of those issues.
Thank you.
Along that line, it might be that there are other models. So in Topeka and some other Kansas communities, the developer has to build the infrastructure along with the house. And what we do here is help the, um, offset, uh, so that the owner pays the specials over the coming twenty years. So there may be some other, uh, model that we've not considered.
Wichita does specials too, and, you know, I'm from Wichita, but was in St. Louis for ten years. And it was confusing when I came back and learned, like, it's not, outside of Kansas, there are very few places that do specials. It's the land development cost is built into the house price and not, not funded through special assessments. But we're happy to explore other alternatives.
Just in case somebody has a new model. You have someone from Lawrence, what does Lawrence do?
Not sure off the top of my head.
But you have someone with you from Lawrence, is what I'm saying.
Well, the alternative is just to include all that into the original cost of the lot. Instead of paying your twenty thou, twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars' worth of specials over twenty years, your lot just went from twenty thousand up to forty-five thousand. That's, that's the alternative, right? So it's not like we're going to be able to get it somehow cheaper. It's just a matter of, well, it will be cheaper over the long haul, but it's just a matter of, your lot price has just doubled because, but, but then you don't have that extra expense either. So we've talked, we've talked about it, but never really seriously.
Just like, nobody likes dorm food, you know? You have something to complain about.
Right. So we have, I have a few more slides and then we'll wrap up. What, what this does is summarizes some of the, the market segments and where we see demand going. We see affordable demand being consistent, workforce demand increasing, student demand decreasing a little bit, continue to, but you still might see new construction, student housing, because it continues to perform well in a lot of, uh, markets. And it performs well for investors and developers as well. Senior housing, we do see an increase and, as well as upscale housing. But it is thinking through, what are those housing products? And we'll provide some examples. We will do some feasibility testing where we look at the construction costs and market value and the impact of different interventions being at, uh, abatement. You know, will that make certain renovation projects feasible? We're going to look at all of that for, for some of these different models in different areas. So we want to think through, like, what will help meet affordable demand and student demand? And will that require some policy change and discussion, um, for you all? Um, it's, it's possible. So thi- this is an example of what's coming. And what's a strategic approach? We, we will start with a broad framework and have discussions about what makes sense for the city of Manhattan. You know, and we align it around these, these broad strategy statements, creating workforce housing opportunities, reducing barriers to quality affordable housing, improve housing stability. What does this mean? You know, some of these tactics that are listed here come from our experience in other communities. We've helped implement some of these things in, in some of the communities. But when you're thinking about workforce housing, you, you have a fund coming. How do we maximally leverage that with some of these other, other things the city or a partner could do? Is it acquiring sites in key locations that are near employment or near, um, transportation that helps get people to, uh, employment? Is it creating a, out of that fund or with a partner fund, a reconversion loan fund to help people, you know, who are kind of on the fence about converting their, their former rental property to a single-family unit? It needs to be modernized. Kind of easy capital that would come back to the city, kind of a revolving loan. Just continually making sure the land use policy supports these goals. So if it is a different type of housing unit, can we build it where we want to build it? And, and thinking about reducing barriers to quality affordable housing, it is allowing more diverse housing types across the city. We've worked in a couple of communities about establishing an affordable housing trust fund that focuses on, uh, home repair, expanding weatherization that improves just the health and safety for people to stay in their homes and, and supports new construction as well. Creating a program that helps those who struggle with housing stability, um, because of, of past problems. There's some, uh, nonprofit agencies working on, they call it second chance tenancy, where they work with tenant and landlords to, you know, help facilitate things past that, that, you know, challenging, challenging, uh, rental history, to set people up for success, both on the landlord and tenant side. When we're thinking about housing stability, there's a, there's a number of different strategies and tactics. Expanding tenant education and supports, uh, tenant, what the tenant's responsibilities are. When a tenant can, you know, call and ask for an inspection. Maybe some more mediation between landlords and tenants. In Tulsa, there's a, they call it gold star landlord, where a lot of actually local landlords, small, you know, the mom-and-pop landlords, you know, work with the city to get recognized as a gold star. They have, um, a good history with, you know, few evictions, few, you know, code violations. And they get kind of, uh, priority access to some of the different city programs and incentives, be it their affordable housing trust fund or some of the programs that have come out of that. You know, there's also kind of thinking through not just like a redevelopment or renovation loan or fund, but, um, yeah, making sure the, the policies, you know, allow for, for that kind of renovation. We heard in our steering committee meeting that, you know, it seems like there are more property owners who are ready to let go of their, um, rental property. There are still expectations that might be dated in terms of the value today. Because five years ago, before the links, the big property was built, you know, it was very easy to rent, um, by bedroom. So the, the market value was, was high as a rental. And, and that's kind of changing for some of those older homes with a lot of rooms that are rented. So kind of helping, you know, with, with some of the data we'll have, you know, get people to recognize that the highest and best use might be a single-family home now, so I need to figure out how to renovate it, start to get some local lenders on board. You know, maybe a, a city fund that helps get that going, that's revolving, things like that, to bring all the pieces together. And so forth. And that's really what we're thinking about, what are those different elements? And you've brought up a lot of good ideas here today. And so we are moving to asking that question, what do we do about it? And, you know, this effort is laying the foundation of understanding those needs, how, you know, and, and where the priorities are. So I just, just quickly want to highlight those next steps. We talked about the development feasibility models. This helps us know where there is a development gap, where there needs to be some sort of support or intervention, so we can talk about the scale of that, um, where the funds might come from. Is it the workforce fund? Is it maybe some philanthropy partners can come to the table? It's happened in a lot of communities. So we know what the need is and how to start chipping away at it. It's talking about the possible uses of those workforce funds. Is it renovation? Is it new construction? Is it accommodation to, to move the needle to meet that workforce housing need? What are other funding and financing sources that have worked in communities that are similar? We are going to look at what some of the peer cities have done, who have similar housing challenges. And then thinking through the other details, prioritization. You know, we may give you just a number, ten strategies, but we're going to prioritize, you know, over the next three years. You know, we think you should work on these three things because of all of this, you know, data-driven analysis. And we'll work with this closely with the steering committee and city staff on, on what those priorities are. So that's what's coming next. I do, you know, I'm happy to answer, we're happy to answer other questions. Uh, really appreciate your time, your questions and thought. It, it has been wonderful to work in your community. You have a great community, wonderful restaurants. It's very beautiful here, but, but you do have some challenges. And we are really looking forward to unpacking this more on answering that question, what do we do about it and what makes sense to do in Manhattan?
Commissioners, are there other questions before we wrap up?
Yeah, I, uh, this is you, Sheri. I thi- I think, um, I, I appreciate the presentation. I know it took a lot of work, and I know we're only in the third part of it before we move on. And I'm looking forward to what the recommendations will be. I did appreciate, um, the different types of groups we have. And I also, the chart about affordable workforce student and some of the options for what each of those categories might be looking like. So that when we, because I think it's also important for developers in our community and in our surrounding area to know exactly, in a comprehensive manner, the need. So I think if we can, uh, at the end of all of this, have a document where, where anybody who is a new developer or a veteran developer or whatever they might be, they can see, okay, this is what we need, let's try to do something about this. I think there's, uh, you had, there's a good steering committee, so I'm glad that the steering committee is there. I think the thirteen hundred participants, it's good to have that kind of feedback from, uh, and I like all of the individuals that you had interviews with. Several of them I know personally, but their professional background is very important to this instead of a layperson who's just giving an opinion, uh, which is also important because they're basing it on their life skills, but someone who deals with some of the, um, uh, families or students or, um, senior citizens, whatever it might be. So that, it's good to have all of that feedback into this document. Some of the things the city does well is, there was mention about neighborhood, uh, schools and parks and recreations. And I think that's something we have intentionally done as a city commission and also as the Board of Education, making sure we have good, strong neighborhoods, elementary schools and a walkable place so that students can walk to their schools or ride their bikes to their schools. So we tried to invest more in that. And in our parks and rec, we tried to have more parks for everybody, quality of life is critical. The sales tax initiative passed for the rec centers, so neighborhood rec centers were very critical. But housing has consistently come up. So I think when we try to recruit or retain employees in our community, those are our strengths. Of course, the affordability, affordability of housing consistently comes up. So I'm looking forward to more options on where we can invest and how best to utilize those funds. But also, what are some federal programs that we can tap into? Because this is not just a Manhattan problem, this is a nation problem. And I also don't know what our homelessness rate looks like. And, uh, I, we can't assume because it is a homeless quote-unquote person, they have no income. They may have income, they just have no place to live with that type of income. So I think that's, I don't know where you would get that data, but I think that's pretty big. Especially if you are, um, in a challenging family situation and you left and you're trying to find a place to live. There aren't many options. Because that's also workforce. They're working, they have children, but I don't know what type of housing they're looking for. It may not fit into this type of paradigm. So those are some things I would look, uh, forward to hearing more about, uh, as you move forward with, with all of this. I like it, and like I said, a lot of work done, uh, for phase three, and I'm looking forward to the next two phases. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments?
I'd just say, when I was looking over the report and looking at a lot of the people who are participating, and maybe I missed them, but the, one thing I'd really like for you to do too is talk to a lot of the landlords, especially a lot of the bigger landlords, and get, you know, their perspective on what it is. Because there's people who, you know, have invested a lot in our, you know, community, and we talk about these different strategies, they're obviously going to be affected, um, by those as they come in and they could also be some really good partners on what we look at going forward.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Andy, right?
Yes.
Uh-huh. I wonder if there's anyone here, uh, from the public that would like to, um, comment on what we've heard this evening? And if there is, we may not have answers, but, uh, you're welcome to, uh, come to the podium. Seeing no one, uh, we will, thank you very much, everyone. Appreciate your report to date, one-third of the way. Is again, and when will the next report be? I had to ask, right?
That's a great question.
Two-thirds way, or what?
I think there'll be some, like, I think we'll probably release a kind of summary of the survey data because I think it'll be really informative in the next few weeks. Our next, like, formal deliverable is, I believe, in May. May, where it's the strategy framework.
Okay.
Which, which are the options.
All right, I'm sure you'll be on our agenda again. Okay. Thank you very much.
You'll have us back, yeah.
Appreciate your report and appreciate all the information we can get. Thank you.